Public Matter. Presentation of a proclamation. And I'm going to read our proclamation. This is recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I know we have Dina here, Dina Fokinghorn, who's from Project Sanctuary. That name would come to me. Okay. To receive this proclamation. Whereas every child deserves to be safe and nurtured in caring relationships, and every family deserves to be safe and nurtured in their community, whereas too many of our children are exposed to sustained stress and violence, contributing to adverse child experiences, which can be devastating to a child's development. Whereas sexual assault is an intolerable crime with public health implications for every person in Willets, whether as a survivor, significant other, neighbor, coworker, or family member of a survivor. Whereas we lay the foundation for our future when the entire community takes responsibility for creating healthy and nurturing environments in which to raise our children. Whereas Project Sanctuary provides 24-hour hotline services to victims and survivors and their significant others, responding to emergency calls, offering support and comfort to those impacted by sexual assault during medical exams, criminal proceedings, and empowering those impacted by sexual assault to chart their own course for healing. Whereas Project Sanctuary proudly partners with advocates supporting Coast Kids and the Childhood Trauma Action Team throughout Mendocino County in combined awareness during April 2021 to acknowledge the overlap of these critical issues. Now therefore, being resolved, we, the City Council of the City of Willets, join Project Sanctuary, advocates supporting Coast Kids, and the Childhood Trauma Action Team in the belief that all community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence and child abuse. Along with the United States Government and State of California, I do hereby proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Now therefore, I, Mayor, along with our Vice Mayor, Suprina Berdurez, and council members, Larry Stransky, Gerardo Gonzalez, and Greta Kani, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention Month. So I would like to welcome Dina and have her say a few words about this proclamation and about the work of Project Sanctuary.
Well, thank you, Mayor Strong, for reading that, and to the City Council and the City of Willets for recognizing April as Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Sometimes we get asked why we keep doing these awareness events with city councils and the Board of Supervisors every year. And I can tell you that these outreach events, things like this, actually do result in increased calls for help in April for sexual assault and in October for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We do get an increase in our calls. So you just never know when you do these events, who's listening, who's watching, who might need the help and connect with us. We did see, I just wanted to mention, you know, we're coming, I don't know if we're through it, we're sort of through the pandemic now, and we did see a drop in calls for services on the sexual assault side when school closed. You know, there is a connection there with those children and their teachers, and we sometimes get referrals out of that. So that was an unfortunate, I think anecdotal side effect of the pandemic. But, you know, we're here, we did not close, we stayed open remotely for everybody, and we still managed to provide services. I just wanted to mention that because of COVID, we can't do a typical outreach month where we're out in the community, which usually do all kinds of events, but this time we won't be able to do that, just like in October. So we have some virtual events, and it's mostly through our Facebook page throughout the month. Towards the end of the month, we'll have a workshop in English and in Spanish on sexual assault prevention that might be worth checking out at the end of the month. Thank you very much for inviting me. I'm very happy to be here with people in Willets, and thank you so much.
So just for the record, is your website for Project Sanctuary, what is it?
Well, the workshops and events for the awareness month will be through our Facebook page, and you can find us fairly easy on Facebook.
Is it Project Sanctuary Mendocino?
Yeah, it's ProjectSanctuary.org. There's another Project Sanctuary in the country on Facebook. It's a veterans' support organization in the Midwest. So we're not them, but we do, so it should be easy to find us.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the work you do.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So now, before you, oh, go ahead, Suprina.
All right, this is Suprina Berdurez. Before you move on, I just want to give a special thanks as well to Project Sanctuary and acknowledge all of the work from the social workers to the volunteers to the child advocates to the foster families out there that help work to keep our kids safe. There's a whole network of people out there that are working hard on this, and I want to acknowledge all of them and thank them. And again, thank you for your hard work.
You're very welcome. And I should mention, I'm here to represent Project Sanctuary, but we partnered with Child Abuse Prevention Council because they both awareness months occur in April, and unfortunately, there is an intersection between the two things. So I'm here on behalf of both, but I myself am just Project Sanctuary.
Okay, thank you. Jerry?
I just wanted to say, Dina, when I was chief, I really, really appreciated having Project Sanctuary there to help us out. When you can call somebody there to be an advocate for somebody that's just been through something, I really look at Project Sanctuary as a resource in our county.
And we appreciate you and law enforcement, the partnership for sure.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, we're going to move to our next agenda item, which is our big agenda item for tonight, the City Council Goals Sitting Workshop. So I think I'm going to turn it over to a combination of Brian and Bob to lead us through this process.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'll make some overview remarks, and then I'll ask Brian to contribute as well. As all of you know, we were last together, at least virtually, on March 20th, and during that Saturday workshop, council spent a great deal of time coming up with 12 candidate statements. Each of those candidate statements were accompanied with implementation steps. Following that activity, those candidate statements were revised slightly to reflect council contributions, and then we went public with them and tried to encourage public comment. We did that between probably March 23rd or 24th and actually April 1st. During that period of time, as you know, we received 31 responses. I'll say, in total, I thought the 31 responses were very thoughtful and very complete in their responses. I also thought the public comments were worth and were valuable and had all of those distributed to the council, so you had the virtue of seeing what people had to say. I know that you might think that 31 responses is relatively on the low side, but I tend to be a bit more optimistic. I think it, for the first time, I think that you've attempted something like this, it really was a good start. And I think that the input you received proved to be valuable, and I think as you continue with your public engagement efforts, that's only going to build from there. The next step was obviously, as I indicated in the staff report that was distributed late last week, was a request to actually score the individual candidate statements. The purpose behind the scoring is a next step activity in trying to get to a point where the council can review a list of prioritized goals and hopefully come to consensus about them. And the method that I requested that you use really had two forms to it. One was that each council member had a total of 30 points that they could assign accordingly, and I suggested a rate of zero to five, with zero being a goal that would be at the bottom of somebody's list and five being the top of the list, which might mean a goal statement was urgent and necessary. But I also indicated that especially with that rating system, that it was advisory, and certainly if the council wanted to, they could have assigned more points to a particular goal, and some in fact did. I do want to again stress the fact that this is a tool to try and get us to this point. Fortunately, all the council members participated and got their results in, and we were able to tabulate them, and then late this afternoon, we actually had a prioritized listing for discussion purposes sent out to each of the council members. What I would like to say about that prioritized listing, it was interesting in looking at the tabulation results, because the first five to six goals were pretty much top priorities of about all council members completing the scoring. Unanimously, the top goal, at least tabulated goal, was the development and implementation of a sustainable fiscal plan. That by far was everybody's top goal. The next two, three, four, and five goals were in everyone's bailiwick, so to speak, as being important. As the tabulation grouped out, number two was the city's general plan update, number three, maintain a public safety agency, number four was maintain and improve infrastructure systems of water, wastewater, and public facilities, number five was develop and implement an economic development strategies for the city of Willets. In some cases, the members, you move those around, one of those might have been higher than the other individually, but when collectively those scores were all combined, these really represented the top five, if you will, followed closely by the goal regarding the environment that was actually came in at number six. And then the remainder of the goals on the list pretty well were a little bit more distant than those first six. They included number seven, creating a realistic staffing plan for the city, number eight, developing a plan to encourage the construction of new housing and the preservation of existing housing stock, number nine, developing and complete a plan to annex properties, number 10, develop a city street improvement program, number 11, increase public use of facilities, and number 12, develop a program to increase public engagement. All of these goals are extremely important, so I understand how difficult the rating may have been. And it's also important to realize that, you know, if the council is consensus is to adopt this listing without much modification, it's important to realize that the prioritization, yes, will provide direction to staff in terms of budget development, but that's not to say that any of the rest of those goals on that list are not on the list, so to speak, and cannot be activated. They are on the radar. The rest of those goals will largely depend on fiscal availability, and, you know, you just don't know, as you go through the project process, you'll set it up, and then you'll find that other resources may become available and that might be a little bit further down the list. But that's why the setting of the goals is to be primarily a guide, not necessarily locked in concrete. One of the things I will suggest, though, as an operational measure, as you go forward through your year, your operational year, once your budget is adopted, you know, in the past, I've used a listing of goals as a format to measure when things come up that are outside of the listing here. I think it's important that as you get requests for whatever kind of assistance, that you measure that request or the request to use budget funds as it conforms to your list of adopted goals. It's just a good measurement device as you go through the operations. So essentially, that concludes my part of the report. I was going to ask Brian if he's got any comments he would like to offer.
I want to just add a couple of quick things. One is that I didn't, I know that you tried to get it published for a public comment in the Willets Weekly, but it didn't ever make it into the Willets Weekly, and I also never saw anything on Mendocino Voice. And for me, at least, those are two things that I get pretty regularly. I didn't get any other Facebook notifications or anything. So I am a little disappointed that we didn't get more respondents, but I'm thinking it didn't get quite as much, different kinds of media that different people may access that didn't necessarily get to everybody. So that was one comment. And then I also did not receive an email with the tally that you're just describing, Bob. I just looked at both of my emails, and I didn't get it. But my home email is getting a little erratic, so it may be my fault. Anyway, just a comment.
I didn't get what you're referring to, and then when you read off the ranking of them, I'm wondering if mine were in the correct order in terms of how they were interpreted, because I did mine priorities as one being my top priority, 12 being my least top priority.
I see.
I thought when Kathy read the list, it didn't reflect my priorities, so maybe you could go over how those were heavily.
Well, you know, unfortunately, when those came in, I took them to be, and maybe we'll need to review that one more time. I took them actually to be an assignment of points, and that you had just taken a little bit different approach. So what I attempted to do in coming up with those is simply to break down what I thought were points to a common factor that would equate to 30. My suggestion would be, Kathy, I don't know if you have the availability to get that, send that back out, the exhibit that I provided this afternoon, and maybe what would need to be done is the council needs to look at that and make sure that they're comfortable with that before really proceeding much further.
Jerry?
Yeah, I kind of took it, I thought you mentioned that it could have had over 30, and honestly, I felt like I went ahead and ranked a couple of five, and then realized I ran out, and I took some away from others, and figured that I only had 30 to go, and then I just kind of started looking at it from standpoint, some are really good things, but I kind of wanted to have a good idea where we sat money-wise before I'd want to commit, so I ranked them a little low. That was my methodology. So I only used 30 points max and spread it out.
Right, which is appropriate, would have been appropriate.
I didn't, I didn't. Brian, why don't you add any comments, and then council members can decide how we want to proceed.
Yes, I thought the items had gone out this afternoon. I know Larry has them, so.
I thought they had two.
I just want to thank Bob for his time and effort that he has put into, you know, it's been, he's been leading the effort, I've been supporting him, working through, last several weeks, it's been informative and learned a lot, so that's a good thing. Regarding these, the whole list of items that has been composed by the council are all meaningful, they all have their value, they all have their worth. And from my perspective, as the appointed chief of the organization and making sure that the mechanical items fall into place and mesh together, these are nice, clear, concise goals. They're very tangible and something that, as myself, can get my head around and repackage them and present them to staff as we go through budget development, as Bob noted, but also as we look at other key decisions as the organization moves forward. I think these are items, you know, straightforward housekeeping items, they are going to get the organization together, we're going to be looking at some key elements, especially as the budget comes forward and we're more secure with our financial resources in the future. These are items that I think kind of lead the organization in a good position, a good place, and that we can use for the future. And I have told several council members, you know, this is not the end of goals, this is just the starting point. This is just a platform, it's a good model that Bob has presented to the council, and definitely, I think, if, when we get to a point where we can adopt them, the council feels confident enough to adopt them, then, you know, sometime in the near future, you know, at a quarterly, you know, knowing that we're at the verge of day, we may want to, you know, jump ahead a couple of months and look where we are after we put the budget together, and definitely look at them in six months to eight months, and then as we roll into the new year and we start this process over. So, like I said, there's good items here, I appreciate the effort that Bob put into them, and I would request the council to give these considerations, these goals, clear consideration to adopt them when you are confident that you have reviewed and the scoring was what you thought it was going to be.
So I'll comment and then open this back up again, but one, I guess, I do, I think I said it several times, I liked all of these, and so I don't think any of them should drop off of our radar. Some of them seem more like, I guess I'd call them housekeeping, you know, things that I just expect are on our staff's plate, that should be more or less routine, but it is true that, you know, even those sometimes have to get put on the back burner to fight the current, you know, crisis of the day. But, so I think it was hard for me to weigh between a goal that isn't routinely on our plate, like, you know, say, street maintenance. I mean, street maintenance is something we're going to do ongoingly, versus doing a new general plan, which is a big push that goes beyond your day-to-day things that you just have to take care of. So some of these are hard to weigh against each other, you know, to say, one of them's worth five points and one of them is worth one point, it's not. And then also, within the 12 headings, some of the implementation steps are a higher priority for me than others. So, you know, then it gets hard to say, well, is that, do I want to give that a two because only one of the four implementation steps is important or is a high priority for me? So it's a lot of judgment calls, and I think that what Brian just said about reviewing this as we go, and Jerry's also saying this, reviewing it as we look at the budget and what are the implications for our actual decisions as we go along, and not saying, well, that one only got a few points, so it's, we're not doing it. That's not what we're saying, we're just saying we're going to try to juggle as many of them as we can, and some of them are going to require more dedicated resources than others. So those are my comments. And the fact that we didn't get the ranked results and that Suprina's not sure that hers were distributed with the right points to the right places may mean that we need to put this over to the next meeting, but I'll leave that to other comments from council members. So opening up for council member comments. Who would like to? Anybody? Jerry?
I agree with what you said, Madge, and I guess, since it is a kind of a living kind of document in that sense, then I think that, while as Brian feels he's got some direction for preparing the budget, because I kind of felt the same way you did, Madge, some may have had more of a weight to me, but, and as I said, I use the old, well, I can't do this until I have the money for this, so I'm going to rate this higher, and I figured that as we move along, more information or money will let us know that we can do something else, or people or time will let us do something. That's what I think.
Other comments, council members?
Mayor, may I make an additional comment?
Certainly.
I think the other thing we need to consider is, what started this process was a communication session facilitated by Bob, and one of the goals out of that, or what that was trying to accomplish, was to, you know, have the council members explain, indicate to me, what is your priorities, what are you looking for? And I think if you look at the goals that you see here before you, I think that process was accomplished. Now I have a clear indication of what five members of the council value from this organization. You know, maybe one is two below another, but I think if, the first shot, as Bob mentioned, of composing ideas and bringing them on paper, I think ranking is somewhat secondary, I mean, it's important, but it's also, it gives me the roadmap that I can use when moving this organization forward, and something you can hold me this organization forward and something you can hold me accountable to.
Madam Mayor, well, I just wanted to say that most of these goals, keep in mind, are going to be multi-year goals. There's hardly one of them that you're going to be able to complete in a single year. And as Councilmember Gonzalez said, a lot of it will happen as funding becomes available. It's not always going to be sequential, and those implementation steps weren't meant to be sequential per se. That's why they're not numbered. They are probably all likely to need to be done before the goal is actually accomplished. But for the most part, it's going to take multi-years to, and an example of that is the general plan, which likely will take three to five years.
I saw Greta's hand, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate, Brian, your last round of comments there, I think that as far as a starting point and giving you a blueprint for, or an idea of what the council's values are, I think this is a really good first step. I agree with the comments about ranking, it did make me a little cranky because it was hard to say, you know, one is more important than the other, but ultimately, I'm fine with what you've presented, especially with the understanding that, you know, all of these will continue to be on the city's radar as important, important items to accomplish. I think to me that the most, the biggest benefit of this exercise has been that for two years, I've heard about all of the projects that are constantly happening in the various departments of the city, and they're all worthwhile and they all take a lot of effort and staff is currently actively engaged in them, but I didn't have any kind of picture of necessarily why we were doing all of these projects, of what the, what the goal was of completing them. And so now, this gives me a framework for understanding the work that happens at the city, and that's why, to me, this exercise has been valuable. So, yeah, you know, we could argue until the sky falls down about which order to put them in, but ultimately, it's really just where are we trying to go? This is the roadmap and now at least we have an idea.
Other council members want to comment? Any public out there, would any of our other guests like to speak to us on this matter? And I'm not hearing any. So, is it the council's preference to sort of take this under advisement, look at the results of our collective numbering of things and then revisit it at our next regular meeting, which is going to be April 28th, I believe? Is that, is that the preference of the council, to not take action tonight?
That would be my preference. I'm looking at how the community scored and I know each of us scored, but there are some similarities, but there are some differences in what we set our goals and what the respondents set of their goals.
So that would be good to look at, too. I didn't see, yeah, I guess I did see the ratings, but it was sort of hard to do that and it was hard to look at all the different pages and weigh them one against the other, but I did read all the comments, and by the way, for those public folks out there who did comment, even though there were only 31 of you, you had some very thoughtful contributions, I really appreciated reading people's thoughts. Which brings me to another question, if we're going to put this over to April 28th, which is three weeks away, would there be any value in running it out for public comment again? Because as I said, I'm not sure everybody got a chance to even know what was going on. I think the tree survey got more play than this one did, and the tree one is good, but, I mean, I saw a lot more postings about that than I did on this. Just.
I wish you didn't mention that because Kenon has already had a big hit that, you know, his survey outscored everyone, so thank you.
I just don't think this one got quite the publicity that it could have. So, how, I would recommend that we do another round, maybe putting it in the, either the order that we got it in before the rankings or in the ranked order that you just developed. I think it'd be good to stick with one set of numbers so we don't get confused about, you know, which number we're talking about, but I would personally recommend that we give another opportunity for public comment. Any comments, Greta?
I sort of would prefer to just approve this and move on, I really feel like this is a starting point, we've spent a good deal of time on this, I think that we approached this in a thoughtful manner, the council and the staff both put a lot of work into this, and I don't think the public is going to be super excited about it until they actually start to see some movement, but we can't do any movement until we start. So, I mean, I don't think that this got as much play as the tree survey because it's just frankly not as exciting for most people. You can talk till you're blue in the face what your priorities are, let's see what you're going to do. I mean, I think that's what they're waiting for.
Okay, Jerry?
I kind of agree with Greta, not that I want to devalue the public, but I kind of see this thing as, again, a moving target and that as we move along, maybe the next meeting, Brian can maybe talk about any nuances or something. It's the information we wanted, then we start putting the budget together, it's been my experience that, once you start putting the budget together and saying what you're going to fund or not to fund, that's when folks spark up their interest. So, I guess I would second Greta's, it's a motion.
What, was it, was it a motion, Greta?
Yes, I move to accept this ranking and goal statement as is.
Okay, and Jerry seconded it. Right?
Madge?
Yes, yes. Larry?
I agree with Greta and evidently I'm not as smart as these people because I ranked it just the way that it was said to be ranked, and consequently, you know, I was all ready to do this because I put the fives and the threes and the twos all together and some things didn't get anything. And, not that they're not important, but I didn't consider the budget, how much it was going to cost or anything else, because I didn't read anything in it that stated that that was a part of it, that it was just the ranking of the goals, and that's the way I did mine. But I agree with Greta and certainly with Jerry.
Okay. By the way, I think I did it, I followed the directions, too. I had many years of test taking, but it is, it is a very subjective weighing, you know, and I think Greta used the word, she got kind of cranky because it's hard to weigh one thing, and I also agree that the rubber hits the road when we actually start implementing it through the budget process, but my experience is that the public doesn't get very excited about budgets. Maybe they should, but they don't, it's really, you know, very arcane stuff for most people, unless their particular item didn't get funded and they want it. But I don't see us getting the same kind of substantive feedback on budget that we did on this. So, I'm, yeah, Greta, go ahead.
I guess my biggest concern with moving forward with this tonight is if Suprina feels very strongly that there are one or two goals of hers that she's prioritized that are not in the top five. I mean, you know, Larry's lucky, all of his goals were, you know, on here as he, as he wanted them. I got a couple of mine in there in the top five, I'm happy enough with that. Suprina, is there anything that you really feel passionately about that isn't in that top five that you would like to see reranked, or can you live with this?
Honestly, my answer is going to be no when we go to vote. I'm not happy that it's not in the top, but what even more concerning is, is that as I read over the survey from the people that took it, I don't see how our ranking is aligned with the public's ranking. For example, I'll just give an example, and that's that the annexation was the lowest recipient of all, but in our ranking, it is definitely not the lowest recipient, and you can go on and look at the rest of the points, but I just don't feel like we're very well aligned with what the public said, that what their, their goals were.
I'm also, I still haven't seen, I mean, Bob said it orally what the top five were, but I got a little confused about what they were because he said the first five listed were, but then he also listed number six, and it's hard for me to do this with just oral. I would like to see the ranking and to see it compared to what the public feedback was. So I kind of agree with Suprina, it's, I don't feel like I really have my head wrapped around the judgment calls that are going into the ranking of these. I think all of them are good, and I think they're a wonderful direction to staff to have these articulated the way they are, but I don't feel like I understand what the ranking we're proposing is and what it's based on. So, I'm not unhappy particularly, I think it's all going to be on the table anyway, so I don't feel angry about it, but I would rather have a little more time to process the information personally. So, we've heard from all of our five council members, I'm going to throw it back to Bob and Brian to see, but we do have a motion and a second on the table, if you have any comment about that before we go to the vote.
Well, from my perspective, it certainly is the wish of the council whichever way they want to go. My suggestion would be if the decision is to hold it over, I would ask Councilmember Rodriguez if she wouldn't mind re-scoring it and using somewhat the same formula, it was a bit confusing when I looked at it, unfortunately, so that created some difficulty for me as well. That way, that just keeps all the playing field level, so to speak, and we can see then if it makes any changes, but as the council has said, you know, having these statements and as Brian has said, at least it is a blueprint to move forward, I think you need to consider that. The only other comment that I have is that, you know, the sooner the staff receives clear direction, the easier putting the budget will be together, and that concludes my comments.
And Bob, I want to apologize for my scoring, we had in the past on, you know, a priority one through three, and I was reading these over and as I read through the packet, quite honestly, I skimmed that one paragraph because I thought that this was going to be something we were going to be doing collectively, and I spent a significant amount of time reading each of the goals, thinking about them, and looking at what each of the respondents had to say, and I missed that five point, or 30-point system, and so I ended up scoring them one through 12. So I do apologize for throwing council off for that, I don't know how I missed that other than the fact that I was very focused on what the public had to say and their responses.
I have one other comment about the annexation and the feedback from the public about that. To me, it's really important to understand that if we have housing, developing more housing as a goal, if you, you know, it depends how you ask the question, and I can hear people saying, you know, we have it up on our plate without annexing more land, but if we really care about housing, which is a big problem for us. So, sometimes my judgment about a priority doesn't follow the public feedback because I think I understand the connection between, you know, a particular action. I see Jerry had his hand up a moment ago. Up, you have to unmute, Jerry.
I was going to defer to Brian real quick, then I'll come back.
Okay.
My only comment is, is that I especially want the council, all five members, to feel confident that, you know, their voices and opinions are heard, you know, delaying it by, you know, one extra meeting is not going to delay the budget development, you know, as Suprina noted that she, you know, maybe misunderstood or didn't understand the rank, the scoring system, and I don't want to, I don't want to have one council member feel they were put out or unease with the end product, I want everyone to have confidence that when this, when we are making decisions and when we're forced, when staff and council members get much ahead and say that they're trying to achieve this goal, you have confidence that they will develop freely and with full conviction. So, if you want to rescind the motion and you put it together and allow the members to fully look at the sheet that Bob presented today and have a chance to compare that with some comments from the general public, so be it.
Okay, Greta?
Brian, you just took the words out of my mouth. I think it's important that everyone feel good about this and I'm happy to rescind and delay this until the next session, so that hopefully Councilwoman Rodriguez can feel comfortable and Mayor Strong can feel comfortable that we can all agree these are good goals.
Jerry?
I want to, I guess I rescind my second, we with Greta, and I just want to put it on record, I did review the goals, I did review what the public had said, but I kind of took the tactic that you did, Madge, I kind of took it to the next level there when I looked at this. And like Greta, I was also frustrated because I know you have to rank them and what you think is important, and I, but at the same time, I followed the directions and disappointed as I may be, I, that's where I was at. So I felt I only had 30 points to wiggle with and that's what I did, and I actually scored some higher than took some points away because I didn't want to devalue something else, and that was my rationale, but I mull over, I actually really appreciated the public comments, I granted it is a small sampling, but it's another opinion, but then overall, I guess I have to look at my experience on the council and now, I also kind of like you, look at housing, yeah, the, some things don't look like they're important, but they're part of the puzzle, that's all I got.
And Greta, I see your hand.
Yeah, and to that point that, you know, the public isn't always going to agree with the priorities that the council sets, I will just point out, we've all heard multiple times, there are too many plans and there are plans sitting on shelves gathering dust, so the public's never going to say, oh, boy, let's do a general plan update, they don't, that doesn't sound good to them, but we all know you absolutely need a general plan update. So, you know, I mean, the public, as much as their input is valuable and essential, we also, like Jerry said, have to weigh our own experience and knowledge of how the organization needs to function to prioritize some things that the public is just never going to find sexy, frankly.
Okay, so we do not have a motion and a second on the floor, and it sounds like we will get a little bit more written material than what we've got, most of us didn't get today, and that this will be on our agenda for April 28th. And hopefully we'll have a chance to confer with Brian at least, and maybe we will have it still available if there are some tweaks that come out of this additional time, for example, if Suprina finds some things that she felt didn't get adequately scored, and I have the same feeling, I want to look at it again. So, I am, I'm very happy with our process and I'm glad that we're going to have another few weeks to mull it over, and I'm glad to hear Brian say this is not going to hold up the development of the budget and his own direction to staff, he's got enough direction to keep him going full blast here. So, any other, I guess, let's see, our agenda.
Madam Mayor, if I could, you know, as to the next meeting, if you feel you need me there, I certainly will be, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for allowing me to work with you and assist you with this process. I certainly enjoyed it, I certainly enjoyed our dialogues throughout the process, and I think the end product will bear all of the I think the end product will bear all of it out. I think you're off to a great start, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, Bob. It's been very, very helpful, your assistance on this.
Thank you.
And I do believe that Brian could have done it, but he would have had to not do a bunch of other things that he had to do. So, so it really was a team effort. Appreciate that. Okay, well, it looks to me like we have completed item four on our agenda, which means we are now ready for adjourning the open session and going into closed session, which is a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code 54957, agency negotiators, Patrick Clark and Brian Bender, with both or all employee organizations. So, let's give our, yes?
Is there another number?
Yes, there is.
I did not get.
It was in your packet, Larry, on a separate sheet.
I, I got you all of my stuff while we were talking, and I only had the one sheet that had the number on it for telephone.
Kathy, why don't you?
I'll call him.
Yeah, and let's give ourselves about five minutes, so that we can all get on board in five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Bob.